The Today Program, he mentioned Williston, North Dakota.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Really?
As a hotspot or?
Yep, it's gonna be hot today, Williston, then he mentioned, and then right after that, he said another town in North Dakota was either Bismarck or mine, and I forget which one, and I went, that's two in a row in like a minute. And now they knew where North Dakota even was.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, when they need oil, yeah, they know where it is. When they need electricity, yeah, you know where it is.
Martin, Bill?
Morning.
Do we have Bill on the agenda?
No, I'm just here to hear about, um...
Oh, okay.
We have Bills on the agenda.
We got Bills.
You're gonna be disappointed.
All right.
Yep.
You have to go over to the board, information.
Nope.
Good morning.
Can't find any of these places, Alice.
That's what I have, I wanted it on there, and that's what I'm gonna report.
Find them for people to know.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll review what's going on.
Imagine.
Yeah. I haven't seen a nickel.
Nickel or dime?
Did you get my email back?
Probably, but I didn't open it.
Yeah, I was like, thanks for the hour and a half of history time.
Nickel or dime?
Been busy two weeks.
I said, yeah.
I know, you kept sending up to me, and I was like, okay, updated, updated.
At least two hours.
Productive?
Oh, very.
Good. Oh, really?
At least two hours at each meeting, and I bet I got three hours at home at each night, just trying to put it together.
Yeah.
When I get it all done, I think I'm gonna ask if there's legal to type it up for us.
Oh, yeah. So that might make that idea.
We're just about ready to do that. And we don't. Coffee.
Right.
That's what we read.
This didn't change, right?
No.
Oh, do I have any idea what went on there? Was that sailing?
Did the place ready?
No, November fifteenth, only the auction.
I was gonna see how many people.
Again, I have a list, I can check off any of it.
Someone will come in and figure it out?
It's not been updated since our last meeting, nobody, no changes.
They gotta tell them November fifteen.
They committed nine thirty-nine.
They have to pay that poll.
For three years now.
I, yeah. I suppose it is.
October first, they could've just got away with paying twenty nineteen taxes.
Yeah, especially with the election and all that.
Pay it, now they pay all the three.
Get Halloween pictures put in.
Right, I know. Decent house.
Where are you at, Mason?
Do you know what's going on with that?
So, in Manhattan, with this dollar project.
No, that's the, uh, CO2, Wells.
CO2, yeah.
All right, uh, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting of Mercer County Commission to order. Um, since it's Tuesday, we have this as a special meeting, um, so the agenda isn't allowed to be changed, but can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Gene, is there a second?
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Wayne, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, next up, we got, uh, meeting minutes of October tw- or October nineteenth?
Chairman and Board, first I'm going to apologize, because had I sent this to Samantha earlier, it would be in here, and that was my error. I did present something to the Board regarding approval of minutes, and I would like to have included. This is what I want included, it was mentioned, it was an action taken at the beginning. Schwer presented to the Board the Attorney General opinion on when minutes must be approved. And I would like that inserted, inserted right after the word "meetings" on third paragraph down.
So after the Board reviewed minutes?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll repeat that. Schwer presented the Board, to the Board of Commissioners, the Attorney General's opinion on when minutes must be approved.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to that effect, Marv?
I was waiting to see if anybody else had any additions or corrections, but I move to accept the minutes as corrected.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve the October nineteenth minutes as corrected, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion? Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Um, review and approve the bills.
Oh. We don't have any just one.
Now we go through, whip it up.
We're all caught up, right?
Those are last month's.
That's last month's.
Just to inform, Bill, we go, we look at all the bills, okay, generally up to about nine thirty.
Yeah. Depending on how good our piece letter is.
Depends on what size to pile. I feel we're in a slow gene.
It can melt today.
Yeah.
Sorry, excuse my reach.
I don't know what it is, I would be calling Jack Montier, or it says...
Oh, my goodness, that's a lot of...
It's a lot of...
Remember talking about it, we were not meeting or not?
That's what I was trying to remember. I don't want to see much of it.
You don't remember what you did six months ago?
For some reason, I don't know why.
I'm finding myself with the videos today. This is the whole...
All the way to Hinterland?
Yeah.
What's this mean when this is, they're cooking under pressure, is it a hard job?
Well, I also looked at it, and I'm like, oh, roasted retired teachers. It's called a pressure cooker.
Poor people?
They retire, and then you cook them.
At least they put information on there, which is nice.
Am I corrupting your space?
No, no, recorded right away over there.
Right, no, there's nothing.
County Road Thirty-Six, there's County Road Thirty-Six. I don't know where those were.
Well, they go larger from west to east, so I'm assuming it's north of, uh, Stanton.
Thirty-one turns into thirty-seven for Stanton.
Stanton, yeah.
North here.
Yeah.
Isn't that the road that the feed locks located on?
That's eighteen, isn't it?
Eighteen.
That's a gravel road, yeah.
Yeah, it's gravel road.
Thirty-Six is that, Stupi Hard Service Road, way up.
Yeah.
To two hundred.
That might be up by the, yeah, I think I know where it was.
You mean you haven't committed to memory all the roads in Mercer County?
No.
That's the test today.
That's the test today? Yeah, I failed.
Quiz.
You can save yourself some time there.
It'd be easy to grade, is what you're saying?
I know where nine is, I know where twenty-six is, I know where twenty-seven is, where sixteen is.
Five.
Or nineteen.
Eighteen.
Sixteen, nineteen. Should have a map with them on, and I would always look at them.
It doesn't.
Talk about them in here, and it would stick out.
It doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
I got the maps, I've been doing a lot of work on that too, and it's like, all right.
I said we had to do it.
Usually when you're looking at the map, I'm looking for it.
We don't have that worse, bro.
It's pretty nice. Very much, you know, straight, you mind all the different roads? It did gradually would get there.
I guess so. Pay for the good stuff.
And one more than Buella that runs east and west, or south, or... Twenty-one. Twenty-one or twenty-six?
Number twenty-six is his test, that's the John Brown rule.
Oh, that's right, because they're all even, north and south, so...
Twenty-one goes north of forty-nine and two hundred, and then it's on the east side of, um, Buella, yeah.
We're helping him cheat on his test, shh.
How do you think I got through? Gotta be careful.
Getting into that gray area.
Statute of limitations on that one?
Sam, what's a cage subscription?
Okay, that is our SAM subscription to, so we have to, um, hold this subscription that, or register in order to have any grant money, and it's through this SAM registration, um, and we have a cage number, so I, that's probably why she put the cage information, I'm not sure, I don't remember what it stands for, the acronym for it.
Yeah, I don't know what the acronym, but every political subdivision has a SAM's registration.
Yeah, right.
Oh, gosh.
In or, in order to have any sort of grant funding, you have to...
Well, we need the grant funding, for sure. Okay, thanks, Sam.
And that, I believe, is a three-year membership kind of thing for, so...
Okay.
Gonna have SAM's number, and a DUN's number, and a N number. That actually looks like the kind of a table.
It does, doesn't it?
I think it was.
I think it was, too.
Can you imagine Paul not bringing your kids to get a correct...
What are you doing?
I didn't know we had these are kind of corrections.
Try to correct them, just take...
I don't know.
Put together?
Put together.
Is it the bank statements, or bank... Or it's all the... Amazon orders, so, yeah, it's just showing you what we've ordered, and then she...
Holy smallish. Make you sit down.
Looks smaller.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you why she had it. Because it's all my credit card, I think, it's all credit card order, so...
It's got all the information, it's just...
Right, it's just, right.
Oh, my gosh.
We've had that conversation several times in the last month at work.
I guess.
This is a bit different presentation there. It's no individuals, it just says, "Piano Hotel."
I don't know, somebody knows what it's probably about. China.
Is there a lock on the door?
Let me ask you though, why wasn't it submitted like other ones that are submitted for reimbursement? Where, where you see the employee, the miles and so on and so forth, it doesn't have any name?
Because she didn't, we only do those when you pay for it out of pocket and then are reimbursed. When we submit it like this, either we pay for it on the account, or...
Well, that's just redacted to the motel, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, seven, forty-seven dollars, there's a lock on the door. That's very...
Economical?
Yeah.
Usually I don't stay at those.
That's the state rate.
That's a government rate?
I hope so.
No, it's eighty-six something. I just submitted one of those. Hopefully I'll see that here, well, here it is. This could've been with that. Lots of training, huh? When you go to the DeDaco convention, they assign you, when you go to the seminars? It's a good, uh...
Revenue generation method?
They offered some good education.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not...
This is a source to recoup their costs.
Yeah.
For their service.
Was there a bond fee on that? I only saw the notary fee on it, but... Because there's a bond, usually that's around sixty bucks, and then the application fee's thirty-six, the voucher's only for thirty-six, so I don't know if she's gotten the bill for the bond.
Yeah, I'd have to double check that.
All the bills don't come in at once.
No, of course not. That'd be too easy.
Todd appreciates those. Of course, dear Todd Meyer, I do appreciate those.
Here's the bond.
Okay.
Tucked in.
Probably. I'll go through them next time when they're cheaper. Something you remember every four years.
Right, and I'm sure it'll stay.
Last three... Wasn't the convention Sunday, Monday, Tuesday?
I'm gonna just put them away here.
Sunday, Sunday night, you had something?
Yeah, Monday.
And then Tuesday?
I don't think so.
There was nothing Wednesday.
Really much Tuesday, just the closing stop.
Reason I'm asking is that, there's three room charges here, conventions.
Oh, for three nights?
Three nights.
So you have the dates, because it should've been Sunday night, Monday night, but not Tuesday, because we were done at like, two?
Right, right.
So we have a bill here for three nights. And all it says is room for convention, doesn't say which convention.
What, any dates on there?
Ten, twenty, seventeen, and eighteen.
Oh, that's a different one, though.
That's a different convention.
Yeah.
Because it was the second, third, and fourth.
Yep, second, third, and fourth, is right. Um, let me see that again, please. Okay, thank you. There's no voucher, I understand.
Backside, on her.
It's taking your order or something, that's mine.
Hey, Sam, on these mileage ones, too, you should, chains need to be changed to sixty-three cents.
Oh, does they grab it on one?
Samantha, there is two on the back. It's just stamped on.
Who's it for?
Gene, I'm not sure, when did the sixty-three cents start?
July one.
Yeah, they must've grabbed some old ones.
Yeah, so all of them still have the fifty-six, just so you know.
It's just, there's your bond.
Yeah, that's what I was typing up. He's just glad to be here.
He's trying to save him some monies, like he deserves. Okay.
Look back on your cell phone.
I know, I'm like...
I'm not sure if we need these. Those are extras.
I got questions.
I want more, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I move to approve the bills as presented.
Motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Um, well, we got a few minutes here before the nine-thirty zoning one, um, got Talon Metals on the other business, um, Gene put that on there, um, he just kinda wanted to state what he knows about it.
Well, I see there's someone in the audience that was here based on that being in the other business, and yes, I did request it to be put on. What I wanted to say is I've gotten several calls on this from the public, and as a Commissioner, I know nothing. And I wanted to get that publicly put out there, that I, all I know is as an individual and a resident of Mercer County, I know what everyone in the county has heard and read in the paper, but as a Commissioner, nothing has been brought to the Commission. So I just, because I've gotten several calls on it, now, if the other Commissioners, if they got anything to say on it, I, you know, they may know something, but I don't, I know nothing. That, and then, and that's all I have.
I have a couple thoughts that I want to share with the Board. In our recent discussions with different ordinance, concerns came up regarding battery storage and battery facilities, and some of the implications for, uh, how they might impact our county. I guess I want us to consider that prior, as soon as this... I guess we want to consider whether we want to review some of these impacts prior to approving, uh, this. There are some concerns, I have a copy of what was given to you, but I only have one page, I didn't copy it for everybody, I don't know why I didn't, but didn't print it for everybody, I should say. I guess I would like a copy of this made and given to all the Commissioners, just for your guys' awareness that there are some concerns with hazardous waste and storage facilities for batteries. Just want to make that, let you know, that's all I have, too.
Okay. Um, basically, what I've, um, uh, been aware of and talked to about is that it's a, uh, pro, they're planning a processing facility, um, essentially, they would bring the ore from Minnesota and process it here. Um, through that process, um, there is a, um, residue that's acidic in nature, um, and one of the reasons they're choosing Mercer County is that we have an abundance of fly ash, which is on the basic, uh, pH level. So when you combine the fly ash with their process, um, it gets you kind of a neutral pH, um, that's just kind of some of the basic science behind it. As far as the facility in Mercer County, they're looking at a few locations, but nothing's been chosen at this time, um, nothing's been submitted to the Land Use Department. Cindy's here, but I know I've talked to her previously, nothing's been submitted. And like, uh, Gene said, basically what we've read in the paper is majority of what we know, um, they're planning this facility. It was announced by the Biden Administration, the Department of... It was announced by the Biden administration. The Department of North Dakota Commerce knows a little bit about it. Essentially, I was given a little bit of information the Tuesday night before that there was talk of it, and then it was released the next morning from the Biden administration, so... Other than that, there's, there's to be brought forth to the county and to the state. We just, we're aware that they're targeting Mercer County, but other than that, we don't know a whole lot.
One question I've been asked by several is, where's this brownfield site? Nobody knows where, where this is, brownfield sites. It says low key, "From the infrastructure law, to help build the facility at an existing industrial brownfields site." And nobody seems to know where this brownfield site is.
Well, a brownfield industrial site means it was an industrial site at one point, and then it was reclaimed. So we have a few instances. I'd hate to speculate on where those are, but the old Stanton Station would be considered a brownfield industrial site. The old Glen Harold Mine would be, and any other mine locations that were considered industrial previously would be brownfield industrial sites.
Okay, so that's not an industry name, that's a generic?
That's a term, basically, means that it was previously industrial, and it no longer has that current use. However, there was a use previously to that location that was industrial.
So even, it's even a learning process for me, as it goes along here, to even understand some of the terminology they're using.
There you go.
Thank you for that.
When all else fails, ask the newspaper. And he'll tell you about the thing.
I too have received a few calls from community members concerned, wondering what was going on, and I'm in the same boat with them. The first thing I knew about it was as soon as I got a call from somebody, they said they heard on the radio. Did some research, saw it in the paper, but I'm still, very much so, want to have more information before we make any decisions or before anything comes through. I want to make sure we get a lot of information in regards to this.
And I mean, talking to the Water Resource Board, you know, they'd like input on it, too, when it comes to any type of facility coming into the, to the county. They want to make sure our water resources are protected, so they did mention it.
As you said, Mr. Chairman, I think there's definitely a lot of work that's going to have to be accomplished in somewhat through zoning and a few other entities before anything's going to be running here. I know I had calls, too, and some of these folks are pretty shook up, you know. This is only what we heard in the paper, but there's a long process that's going to have to happen here, and a lot of dots and i's and t's are going to be crossed. It's not just so-called that the governor suggested it, this is the way, no. It's going to be, it's going to be a lengthy process, so.
Mr. Chairman, does anyone from the audience have any? Can we ask them?
Well, I think we could. Bill, you got a question?
Good morning, Commissioners. As all five of you that spoke so far were as in the dark as your district representatives, we have no information, getting the same amount of phone calls. I'm wondering if it's, number one, hadn't been a political ploy prior to the election. That's just my thoughts. I think it's, it's, has potential, but it's got a long way to go. I mean, you guys are the gatekeepers for the county, as well as planning and zoning, and for you not to know is extremely surprising. So that's why I'm here today, is to find out what you know, so I can pass it on, so.
And that's what we would ask you, then, as a representative for our district, what do you know?
I know nothing, other than what I read in the paper and the phone calls I received. It seemed to know what happened at the coffee shops, so.
And that's what I tried to express, that officially we know nothing, other than what we read in the paper, so thank you.
As soon as you find out something, I'd appreciate it, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, time for zoning and emergency management issues. Perfect segue.
Case number twenty-two, ten oh one is a conditional use permit application from Jeff Hafner for a non-farm residence. It's 2.48 acres, and it's described as a tract in the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter of Section Four, township one forty-six, range eighty-seven of the fifth principal, Meridian County, North Dakota. It was recommended for approval by P&amp;Z on October twentieth, and the conditions are present and future owners are responsible for snow removal and maintenance of private roads and approaches. Septic system must meet Custer Health District standards and provide school bus turnaround if needed. County makes no assurances of passability of the unimproved section line leading to the residence, and landowner will be responsible for expenses of future improvements of the section line and subject to prior approval of the county. And he is planning on putting a modular home on a lockout basement. And he's going to have rural water, and he has contacted Custer Health, the way he sounded. And he won't need an approach from Ken, because it's not on anything to do with the county, so that's why that wasn't on here.
Any questions of the commission? And this was a, a platted two and a half acres, or is it just described?
It's irregular shape, but the plat is in your, you should have a... You should have a copy of the plat.
Okay, so it doesn't have a outlot or a designation, but it was, I see it was surveyed.
Yeah, I don't know what you mean.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept zoning case twenty-two, ten oh ten?
Oh, one.
Oh, one?
Oh, one, excuse me.
Yeah, okay, motion by Wayne. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I was at planning the zoning, they reviewed this pretty, pretty thoroughly, and there wasn't any issue with the road that goes in there, or, or the home, or anything, and bus turn around, so it should be pretty cut and dry.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, temporary use permit, application five ninety-five and five ninety-six are those for applications from Dakota Gasification Company for Wildcat stratigraphic test wells. And those are like those same ones that you guys just basically did the conditional use permits for in June, where they were test wells, and then you did the conditional use permits in June. So I don't know if you want me to read all the, they're basically the same things as the, they were before. These are just two, two new test wells. They're cuto test number five and number six. Do you want me to read all the conditions again, or?
I don't think you have to read the conditions.
And Kevin Solley is here, if you have any questions.
What are these test wells for?
They are...
The CO2.
Yeah, the CO2 project.
How many test wells do we currently have in the county?
Well, these guys, this is their fifth and sixth test well.
So, yeah, again, Kevin Solley with Basin Electric, and I guess, good morning, Mr. Chairman, commission staff. And briefly here, we have already drilled the first four cuto wells. And so the process here in the county is that, you know, first, when they're kind of not proven out, they're just Wildcat wells, they're stratigraphic test wells, and that's how they fit into the zoning ordinance. And so those we did, gosh, it must have been a year ago, and then, so we drilled those, they've been tested and proven out, and then we came back for the, for the CO2 injection, we came back for the industrial zoning and conditional use. So that was what, as you mentioned, what we recently done. And so the, the last two are wells until five and until six. And initially, it wasn't clear that we were going to need them as, as soon as we need them, and so that's why we're moving forward with this request for the temporary use permit, so those test wells can be drilled.
That was going to be my question. Didn't you anticipate those, when you did the first four, that you would need additional more? And if so, are we going to be seeing this again, possibly?
I don't think so. I think this, this will be it. We did, I guess, when we looked at the pipeline, that was another action for planning and zoning, as well as the county commission, we did plan for all six wells, so the pipeline was completely taken care of, and that was kind of seen originally. The wells five and six were, we thought they were going to be made lag maybe, you know, a couple, two, three years as kind of more CO2 volumes became available. But I guess the situation's changed a little bit, and so we're looking to do those now.
Can I ask what changed?
Yes, so there was the, you know, kind of on the federal level, there was the Inflation Reduction Act, and that changed some of the rules for CO2 sequestration. And so it included things, the per ton, per metric ton went from fifty dollars to eighty-five dollars per ton, so that, that was a change. And then also, they came up with something called direct pay. And so, and again, it's not settled, but, but before, we needed a tax equity partner, because Basin Electric is a cooperative and, you know, essentially doesn't have profits, so we don't have any what's called a tax appetite. So, you know, we would need someone from the outside who has a tax appetite that we could kind of share the project with. And so with the direct pay, that has changed, so I guess I keep on saying Basin Electric, but I mean DGC, but we're all kind of together. So, so anyway, yeah, so we don't necessarily need an outside partner now, even. And so that has changed, and it, it kind of accelerates, you know, kind of the, accelerates the need to inject CO2.
It's going to increase your capacity to inject, too, right?
The capacity, so that's another issue. So there is a storage facility permit that is kind of pending at the Industrial Commission. And so that has a certain capacity, and we would have to go back to them if we increase that capacity.
But I'm saying you increased the four to six, so you did increase the ability to inject more CO2?
Well, I think the, the, the planning was for the additional, or, excuse me, the original six wells, but the, the plan was to use four to start out with, and just to see how that goes, and then add a couple more as, as needed, again, when those kind of CO2 volumes became a little bit greater later in the project.
And all this CO2 is being derived from where?
From DGC.
Thank you, that was going to be one of my questions.
Right, yeah, so it all, all comes from, from DGC.
So I have to go back to my memory, and my memory isn't that great. When we originally gave you the conditional use permit for the first four, does that conditional use permit stipulate where you receive the CO2 from, or that you can, or not?
I don't believe that it did. I think it was, we, you know, I guess, I don't, I don't think so. I think it was, but that is what it is. It's DGC and nowhere else.
And DGC's collected CO2 for decades.
Correct, yes, since two thousand, and so there's a pipeline, two hundred and five mile pipeline that goes up the river.
Yep, I worked on that, too. What's in my mind is that, and I'm not sure that I need to be concerned, but maybe I do, if it's, if it's a thought, usually thoughts have value, is that if we're giving conditional use permit for DGC to inject CO2, we just give you a permit to inject CO2, that doesn't mean that you can't have someone else tap in your line and inject CO2 also for a, is that a possibility?
I suppose it, it would be. I don't know if it's practical.
As a business plan?
The, the thing that, that, there's, there's just sort of perfect conditions, so, so most people don't have CO2 at the ready. And, and to add it to a power plant is, you know, we're talking billions of dollars. So I, you know, I don't know if that's going to happen really fast. It may in the future. So DGC is just uniquely situated with the CO2 supply that it has.
What's in my mind is if we want to, I'm not objecting to this, but I'm just wondering if we want to add that this, these two wells will be just for DGC only. How bad would that impact you?
I, I don't think it would be an issue. I can tell you that our storage facility permit with the Industrial Commission is really limited to DGC, because the, you know, kind of composition of the CO2 is listed in there. The source of the CO2 is listed, so it, it may be, in a way, limited at the state level with that storage facility permit from the Industrial Commission. But if, if, you know, if you thought it prudent to put that condition on, I don't know that there would be an objection.
Although it'd be my concern is, you know, what would limit Dakota Gas from contracting?
Right, right, no, I understand what you're saying.
To an outside entity to inject CO2. And pretty soon, we've got CO2 coming from Texas up here.
Right, right, no, I understand what you're saying.
Not picking on Texas, but I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, the, again, the, the infrastructure to get it here is, is massive, and so I, I think it's unlikely that anything like that would, would occur.
And especially since this expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Well, and the...
I mean, that would be a really short time to try and get all of that taken care of.
Right, I guess I'm not sure if I'm, what expires? Oh, the temporary use, sure, sure.
It's an annual application.
Yeah, and so, so the, the other part of this is that, is that we would have to come back for industrial zoning and for conditional use before we would be allowed to inject in these, these additional two wells. So we've done that for the four, so those are all, all set, but, but there would still be another, we'd go through planning and zoning and to the commission again, for, again, the, the change in zoning and the conditional use.
And you actually have to read them these right in January.
But it allows them to drill in the next two months, basically. So we'll, we'll see this again in sixty-one days.
Okay, I guess I was talking to Mervin on the side here. I want to, I want to know now, with this conditional use permit, is, Eliza, is that what you address, that it's temporary?
Yeah, and it expires in December, and they'll have to reapply in January if they choose to.
And they, this is like annually, they would have to reapply?
Just this one, but the other ones you guys did in June are gone.
Right, yeah, so the, the initial ones, yeah, the temporary use is that, there's a time limit on it, and, you know, we come back, do zoning.
But concerns have been, been, been being brought up, even to me as a commissioner, is, are we going to? And, and I'll just blatantly throw it out there, are we going to become a dumping ground for all these other entities? Mercer County, we're going to be dumping CO2, batteries, whatever, because...
Well, let's, let's not confuse CO2 with batteries. But, so, what he's, what he's alluded to is that, you know, the state industrial commission controls the CO2. The state of North Dakota has CO2 primacy, so they have direct control. It's not federally controlled. You know, I understand the concerns that are being brought forth, but part of this is, CO2 is CO2. We don't tell the power plants who they can sell electricity to. We can't distinguish what one electron of electricity generated, or one molecule of CO2 where it's produced. However, some of these comments are more on the business, private side with their contracts. So if we feel that we're going to direct private industry on where they can get these sources from, I think that's an overreach in our standpoint. If we're talking strictly, well, that's my, that's my opinion. You guys have your opinions, but if we're approving test sites for them to drill the sites, that's no, excuse me, no different than somebody drilling a well for water. I mean, we... I mean, we, you know, state water commission dictates that. So I understand the concern, however, we're taking this in steps. And essentially, this is a temporary use for them to drill a well. They'll come back for the industrial zoning, any conditional uses. So this is more or less allowing them to drill the well.
Right, that, that's exactly, that's all that it allows for, right? And, and the, you know, I guess that's why they're called wildcat wells or spread graphic test wells, to prove out the formation. You know, we, we're fairly sure that Broom Creek Formation is going to be there at, you know, 6,000 feet below the surface. But this is kind of just part of the process.
Well, I'm not necessarily objected to a test well and knowing that in, what we approved today can be, it has to be visited again in the near future, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Before there's any injection of CO2 in those two wells, we'd have to come back.
Is that correct, Cindy?
Yes, it is correct.
Thank you. Wasn't doubting you, just verifying.
Sure, no, no, I appreciate the questions, it's good.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the 595 permit.
So, also move, Mr. Chairman, to permit 595 and actually permit 596, they're both the same thing, so.
Okay, motion by Wayne to approve temporary use permit 595 and 596, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion on the temporary use permits for the test wells?
When do you expect to start?
In November, and, and I guess, there's one other thing that I should have mentioned. So the test well, the drilling of the test wells also regulated by the industrial commission. So the, the plan for the well has to go through them. So there's another, you know, level of state oversight to make sure everything's, you know, kind of safe and, and kind of in accordance with all the rules.
This might be a side note, but maybe, I, I'm not going to ask it, it's just a curiosity question. When will you expect to receive the results, how satisfactory the wells are?
Well, it'll, it'll take a couple of weeks to drill each well, so they'll be onsite for, for about four weeks. And, and then some of the testing happens fairly quickly. And then some are lab tests where pieces of, they call side core, are, are sent away to a lab. And I think in Texas of all places.
Why did you say that? Nice plug, but thank you. Good job. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
All vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes, thank you. Cindy, you want to?
Thank you for your time, sir.
Come back so we can have some work on.
That's right.
Just remember that when you're up, when you're approved.
I was, I was up there in Cabo. I was over. His electron thing. Yeah, we, we take what comes out. They make power here. You're not bringing your power into our state. Yes, you can.
Yes, you can.
Appreciate it.
Do you want to take a ten minute break?
Sure.
We get to the roads. Okay, sure. Let's take a recess till 10 a.m. and we'll back up the roads.
So many things that were planned in the past that, oh, don't worry about it, don't worry about it. Before we kick in, no, it's for the surgery.
Well, let's go way back and working the theories and protocols, minds are probably. Now all of a sudden, it's a big deal. So what is this CO2?
Oh, I think Wayne's got to make it back in.
It's like you said, you grow tunnels. I bought seven acres on the island, the tunnels are beneath it, you can't drive.
You can't start.
Can't start?
You got a little bit of time, Wayne.
Have a good day, Bill, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We weren't sure if you were going to make it back.
Make a writing.
Look at that.
Make a time.
Yep.
Knew you had to have something written in the paper, just made you a good guy.
All right, I'll call the Mercer County Commission meeting back to order. Next up, we have road issues, Charlie?
Charlie?
Maybe we should retitle that from road issues to road concerns.
Sure. Whatever works.
There's no issues, we just have concerns.
Right.
Well, Ken asked me if he thought I, if he should need a beer, I told him no, because he wasn't feeling good. He guessed he's got the flu or something, but I told him I'd run through this stuff with you guys today. I have, I guess the first thing on the list, oh, the budget items, or the budget. I saw your email this morning, Marv, but it was 9:07. My car battery was dead this morning, so it took me a little while to get it to work. But.
It's up in the clock.
It took me a while to get in there, I don't know why, it just, I'd have Kevin come bring a charger and all that good stuff. I was going to run through the numbers. So the reason this all came about, I sent over, I'll back up. So last year after Eric, you guys, Eric left Interstate and the transition, transition started to work with, with me. Somewhere in that period of time, and if, I don't know if it was a corporate oversight or the way Eric used to submit bills to you guys, my county department mentioned, well, hey, we still have some invoices from like October of last year that haven't been paid by the county. And I said, well, that seems odd, they, it seems odd, you know, like they, let me reach out to see if they even got them. So I reached out to Rachel and she did some back checking and she said, no, we never even, we've never even seen these. Because I sent them over to her and she took a look at them and you guys don't even have record of getting them. So I didn't know if it was an issue on our end or if it was something that we submitted, but you guys just, you already paid and then for some reason we're showing you didn't pay, anyway. So I went and visited with her about it. And she said, well, why, we don't have a problem paying these, my only question is how we're going to do it because we're already over budget. And I said, well, that, that kind of triggered my curiosity and I thought, well, why are we, where are you getting that we're over budget? Because I'm trending, I'm showing that we're under on pretty much everything that we're doing right now. So what I've come to find out or learn through this process is some of the ways that we're tracking our budget for each fiscal year isn't necessarily working out that way. Perfect example, Mercer 27 overlay project, that's a 2023 project, but we're already working on it. So you guys are already paying us fees that are scheduled for 2023 that will not ultimately be paid in 2023 because you're paying us in 2022. Uh, the same can be said for the John Shields Bridge, bulk of that cost was paid in 2022, but there's been some fees in 2023 or, or 2021, some have been paid this year in 2022. And addition, in addition to that, your, the Box Culvert, Mercer 2913420, that's on the agenda for the public hearing. That, that project, you know, has pretty much everything slated in '23 when you've spent over a hundred thousand dollars on that project in fees this year alone. So the, the budget, as far as the project, projects go collectively, we're well under budget. But this year's numbers, I guess that's what I wanted to bring to your guys, to the light for you guys is in 2022's budget, you're showing over budget because we had, well, we had missile, or general engineering, we had the patching and striping for this year, and I think we had Conroe 26 for this year. Were the three projects, if I remember, if I recall correctly, that were slated for this year. And then the box job, that John Shields box job, that construction that has not happened, which will now happen in next year. So shifting those funds and within the budget and, I guess, is the trickiest part, I suppose, when things change and as, as dynamic as it is on the construction side of things. But I have a breakdown of where we're at with stuff, I went through and checked our records and we're, you know, on the engineering fee side alone, for Bridge 29102-12.1, the Mercer 26 overlay, the patching and striping for this year, the Bridge 2913420, Mercer 27 overlay and the general engineering, you have a total budget, engineering budget of eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. To date, on all those projects, we've spent three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And we're probably never going to get close to that eight fifteen. But it looks bad on this year's budget because of just how it's, I guess, how it is in the budget to begin with. So this sparked a conversation with Rachel and, and I, and we haven't even had a dis, we haven't had a chance to talk, Marv, because this all happened within, I think it was Friday or something last week, I forget. But I think a little more care needs to be taken as to helping, on Interstate's behalf, on helping the county understand, okay, this project, for example, this Bridge 2913420, the total budget on the project was, I forget, 1.1 million. And, you know, it's got 80/20 funding, but the, you know, the engineering fees are all going to be spent. All the design engineering fees are going to be spent this year, so you need to account for that in this budget. And then the next year, the construction engineering, we need to be able to break that up and separate it because I think that's where the, the issue is coming up on the budget side.
There's really not, no thing that, nothing that we can change for the 2022 budget. That was approved 2021, October of 2021.
Right, I'm saying going forward, I'm saying.
Right, and I don't know if it's necessarily a budgeting thing, but I understand and what it seems like is happening is that you guys want to start moving forward sooner rather than later, which is, makes sense, especially with materials being held up and, you know, all these. And it's not anything that I think the county or Interstate Engineering is doing, it's just being able to have those things available when we are going to need them. So, yeah, we need to try to find a balance, I think, or find a.
I agree completely, and I think the way to do, it's an easy answer from my seat because I can tell you, in order for things to even try to stay on track, we need to get ahead of them on the design side. So we need to plan for the design a year in advance of whatever we're doing. If we're a 2024 project, we'll plan for the design fees in 2023. And that's just how they need to be handled. And we need to think of that stuff progressively in a sense that we're doing it ahead of the budget setting timeframe. You know, that's the, I think that's something that, I asked Ken and Rachel if that's ever really been handled that way in the past and they said, no, not to their knowledge, and I said, well, I. Within the road department, I'm saying, on their projects. And I said, well, I think that that's something I can help with if we, you know.
I'd have to kind of half disagree because just what you're talking about has happened year in and year out. You, we usually did our engineering the year before on these projects because you have to get that done before you can do anything else.
Right.
You got to know what size this mach, this pipe is or this culvert is. So a lot of times this was done as, as you mentioned, a year ahead of time.
Okay.
And, and the, the construction very likely went a year afterwards.
Yeah.
As you look back, I'm not a genius, but you look back, I'm sure this is how past history has been because we, and that way we could spread out those funding costs in the budget.
Sure.
And not too often that we were, you would say, over budgeted on, on, say, the engineers. We're right kind of neck to neck from year to year.
Well, that's good, I'm good, I'm glad to hear that. I, I didn't know, you know, I, I, I don't know how it was done in the past, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah. I, I mean, what you were mentioning, I, I just go, well, this is kind of the norm, this is how we had to do business because as long as we didn't hit the benchmark that, well, now we're 500,000 over, we didn't know, we don't want that.
So we were kind of right on par with this year except for now the old invoices that are popping up, right? And that's what's going to put that line on the board?
Well, there, we were trending, I think, forty thousand heavy, is what Rachel said. And the bulk of that is because of this John Shields Bridge. But that John Shields Bridge, and that, that was the other item I wanted to bring up today too because the, the engineering budget on that project, in my opinion, out of the gate, was low. It's, we're ended up spending, putting time into that project that's more comparable to what, on par with what it should be with what the other bridges are that we're doing for the county. So I, that, we're over budget on that project on the in, design side, but that's the only project we're over budget on, except for, I, I shouldn't, I put my foot in my mouth. The, the general engineering, we have a $25,000 budget, today we're at 30. So we're about 5,000 over on that. And that goes, that's for the whole year, so I, I could end up at 35, I don't, 32, I don't know where it'll end up. It'll be kind of close, but the, the, the big project is the John Shields project, that one being, there's a $95,000 total budget on that project and we have $103,000 into it to date from 2021, even going this back as far as 2021, I'm looking at big picture, sorry. But, but yeah, so there, that project alone is, is swaying it a little bit. But to me, the bigger things are the, the fees we're paying for the 13420 bridge and the 27 overlay in this year's budget are all shown on 2023 budget. And that's, you know, that's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
But if they had forecasts, like Wayne said, possibly already, you know, like I said, maybe forecasting that for 2022 for the, the design engineering part of, portion of it. Where did we, you know, what, I guess, what, my question is, why would that push, yeah, push us over?
What I'd like to see, Charles, we can.
If there's a possibility that that was our.
We, we can sum this up. We could say 2022 project, what was budgeted, what's paid, what's coming out of 2023. It's very easy, and then allocate that to whatever funds we're going to get it from. 2023, we can take our three projects, we know what the engineering is for 2023. Some of it's paid in 2022.
Right.
Then we know what's going to be left in 2023, that amount that's left over, we can do the same thing. We allocate with, from our federal funds, whatever we're going to get the money from, and just plan for the remainder. Now, I did say that I was going to get to meeting, meeting with you and Ken prior to this, it didn't occur.
Right.
We probably could have walked through, but some of this stuff is like I've said before, at budget time, it comes up two days before.
Yeah.
And so what I'd like to do is still have that meeting with you and, and do exactly what I just said. 2023, we got one, two, three, four, five projects, some of it's already paid for. It's going to be paid for in 2022 dollars, period, this is the way it is.
Yeah.
So there's a, there, there's so much money left over. We're going to take each one of those projects, the money that's left over to be, still to be paid in 2023, we're going to define where we hope to get the funds from to pay for those projects and bring it back to this board.
And I, and I agree with that, I think that's a healthy exercise, first and foremost. And secondly, I, I still feel very confident that we're going to be okay.
I do too.
Which is fine. The, a good example on this is Mercer 26 overlay, our, our engineering fees were $50,000 under budget. The construction costs were eighty thousands, eighty-seven thousand dollars under budget.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's also helping to offset some of our, you know, budget overages.
I'm not uncomfortable with anything you've shown us today so far.
Okay.
It looks okay.
Okay.
And Charlie covered a lot, but as far as the 2021 invoices, I do remember Shannon making a comment in the transition that she hadn't received a bill from Interstate for four to six months.
A period of months.
And I, and I think we did talk about it and you did mention, you know, in the transition, you were sorting things out and whether those never got invoiced, but, I mean, that's one thing, I mean.
But they have been invoiced and paid now, right?
Have you invoiced those?
We, well, they're in Rachel's hands. We haven't, I wanted to have, I wanted to have this conversation with you guys before I said, you know, give us more money. So I, I, I didn't want to do that to you guys, it was. This, this is from October of 2021.
Okay, because we had invoices today, but that's for this year's projects that we. Cause we had invoices today, but that's for this year's projects that we brought today. Yeah.
We're funding you, Charlie.
I, well, I, so, I think what happened before. And I've had a lot of conversations with our accounts receivable department, I think Eric used to send the invoices directly himself to Rachel. And I've always operated under, my admin sent them for me, even with like the city of Bula and stuff. So I don't think that happened for the first three months, because. I think I, I assumed that the invoices were being sent, and they weren't. And it was just oversight on, on my end with that when I, when I jumped in with Mercer, so.
And, and the other comment I was going to make, um, Samantha, you'd probably have to look into it. If we would have historically done any type of budget amendments, when we didn't expense certain portions of the road budget from one year to the next. Um, so like, if, if we're not spending. Engineering fees or construction fees that are in the current year's budget, they should be rolled over into the next year's budget within the road fund. Because they don't just disappear. So. Um, and that's kind of how our budget works, is we have transfers in, transfers out, all that things, but you're always carrying forward. Um, but I would, I would assume there's probably some type of budget amendments or journal entries or something that. Could be looked at on how we've handled it in the past, and kind of what Wayne alluded to. It, it's kind of standard practice, you can't, you can't bid a project in February if you didn't do the survey and the design, at least in the fall. Cause we're, we're not going to have a practice of punching holes through ice and stuff like that to get survey in January and then expect. You know, a hundred thousand dollar design to be done by February bid letting, when you've only had a few weeks to look at it. But, I mean, going forward, if we have a list of projects, the engineering should be offset one year prior.
And it's. The design.
The design, and, you know, that's kind of what, um, I'm just going to take the landfill, for instance, we're talking about the next year's capping project. Well, we know there's going to be some design now or in, in, in the spring, at the very latest.
Right.
And then you're going to have that project, you can't.
Yeah.
We, we have such a short construction season, we can't do it all in one fiscal year, it's just not, it's not possible.
It's, it's, it'll be a healthy exercise to do like what Marv's suggesting, because there's, I talked, I touched on twenty-six, that project's. A hundred and forty thousand under budget total cumulatively, uh, the patching is about seventy thousand under budget this year, because we patched three spots. I mean, there's a lot of money that's technically not being spent, that's been budgeted, so. Yeah, I think that'll help maybe, I don't know, see it a little clearer.
Let's, let's get a bit, a more clear and concise picture of it and bring it back to the board.
Right, and like Marv said, I don't see any, I don't have any concerns where we are budget-wise or how we've been operating, it's just. Let's make it clear and transparent and.
Right.
Whatever adjustments we need to do going forward, so that.
Cause I, I mean, I could see how that would be a problem on the book, on the budget, right, if it's showing a huge overage on budget, but we're, uh. Big picture, we're not, like, that's what I want to help the county get away from, I want to help however I can. And it's, I'm sure we have done it that way in the past, because that makes good business sense, right? So I, for whatever reason, you know, I, that's where we're at on this one, and we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we get it right going forward.
I'll get together.
Okay.
The stuff that was holding me back this last two weeks is done, had to do with some other meetings I had to be at, so that's done, so. Hopefully, when Ken feels better, we're going to sit down and walk through this together.
Sure.
Once you and I, all three of us can see it clearly, it'll be easier to present to the board.
Sure. Makes sense to me.
And I'm not concerned, at this point.
Okay. Okay. Um.
Do we want to do the public hearing portion and then talk about the culvert quotes?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll do the, uh, the standard procedure, can I get a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the box culvert twenty-nine, one thirty-four, twenty?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, uh, we're now in the public hearing portion, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on the box culvert? Seeing that, uh.
Are we talking the road south of the crossroads?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we had this on last meeting's agenda, and we had a question on formality of it, you know, we didn't. Want to circumvent any type of the process, so we put it on this meeting as a public hearing. Um, it was more for clarification and for additional notice to the public if anyone had concerns, so.
Yeah.
That's why we did it this way, and it's just. We're, I don't think we've done anything wrong, and we're not trying to do anything wrong, we're just making sure that we are going above and beyond what is required. Um, for notice on it, so that's why we did it this way.
Giving public opportunity to visit with us, too.
Correct. So, any other comments from the board or the public?
Is this a time to discuss the project, or do I wait till you close the meeting?
You can discuss it now, we just won't take any formal action until we get back into regular session.
Okay.
So if you want to talk about.
Just a few notes, I guess I'd bring up on the project, we had our meeting last Tuesday with the district. Uh, engineer and Ken and myself, and, um, everything went really well. Uh. There was, the only question they had was regarding utilities, which we already had information on that with, um, Rough Rider. Uh, we've made them aware of, locate, they got a power line out there that's buried, and we're going to have some riprap going on us, on this job, so. Uh, we made, we made them aware of that, but. Um, other than that, everything went really, really, really smoothly. Um. We discussed, um, you know, uh, box sizes, potential, you know, upstream, downstream. Velocity impacts and things like that, we, it seemed that the district really seemed to be pretty. Um, uh, appeased with everything we discussed, so. Moving forward, I guess the next item on that is to button up the right-of-way, which we've had some very good conversations with the property owners on that. We're actually expecting the paperwork back from, um. Uh, the property owner to the north, uh, Judith Urban, she lives in Washington State. Um, she's going to sign that, she just told me yesterday, and get it all notarized and sent back over this week. Um, and on the south side, we've, I've, um. I forget the name, I apologize, but everything's going really well, well, well there as well, they all want to see it done, uh, for obvious reasons, so. Um. So everything's going really well there, the plans and specs were, were, were shooting for Thanksgiving, I think is the DOT timeline for preliminary plans and specs to be submitted. And, um. Uh, I think as we discussed in the last meeting, March is the earliest bid letting that we'll be able to do following the DOT schedule, so that's why we, um, procurement options, but. That's an update on that, I guess.
And that kind of makes me think, you know, we're talking about the culvert quotes, which we'll discuss. Um, but just for history and, and how this has all happened. This was the bridge that we were notified, um, like around October twentieth, the last year, we had to close it by the thirty-first, we're now, you know, obviously one year removed from that.
Right.
Um, we've, we've tried everything we can to fast-track this and get funding for it. Um, and, uh, kind of what we're seeing, uh, nationwide on procurement of any type of physical material. Um, normally, we probably wouldn't do this, but I think in this instance, if we don't secure the box culvert ourself. We could delay this even another year, which we don't want, because we've already had, um, concerns by, um, property owners within the area of access and things like that. So it's.
Yeah.
It behooves us to kind of do something out of the norm, just on timing and making sure this actually gets done next year.
I would agree, yeah, and it, and Judith is aware of that, I, I didn't say, I didn't say you guys were moving forward with the purchase of one. I said that the commission is considering early procurement to try to, um.
Expedite the.
Yeah, eliminate any potential of this delaying any longer, you know, it's, so. It's one year today, I guess, it's been closed, but.
So, any other, uh, questions, comments on the public hearing side, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the standard meeting?
I move to close our public hearing and reconvene our regular board meeting.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, uh, public hearing is closed, we're now in regular session, and we have culvert quotes.
Yeah, so I was able to get quotes from two, uh, Forterra, now known as Rinker, um.
Okay.
Out of Bismarck, and Engineered Concrete Products, ECP, out of Rapid City. Um, both of which provide boxes for state federal aid jobs all the time in North Dakota. Uh. I guess a couple of things to keep in mind, Forterra, they're, they provide, you know, they're, I don't want to call them, you know, a preferred vendor, they are on the. I believe they're listed on the preferred vendor list for the DOT, because they work with them so much, but they, you know, they've been doing it for years in North Dakota. Um. Their production, I believe they're, they're the ones that we're having trouble getting, you know, they have a lot of backlog. So my conversations with Dale at Forterra's, you know, was much in the same that I mentioned, I guess, at the last meeting. Beans, if we wish to procure this early, they would start building it in the spring, and, uh, there's a. High likelihood that we'll have this by no later than August of next year, if we were to procure it now, or get on the list, I guess you could call it. Their quote, their estimated quote for this was two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And if I recall, I think my engineer's estimate was three thirty. So that's under, that's under the, that's under the cost of what we had in our estimate. Engineered Concrete Products out of Rapid City, we've heard a lot of really good things about these guys. Uh, their product, from what I've been told by the district, the state, and Morton County's engineer, all have been nothing but phenomenal. Their product apparently is really, really good, they're not having issues with voids, um, like. We've seen a little bit with some Forterra products. Um, that would probably be the only downfall to Forterra's, is their, their production on one, I don't know, we're just, that's been being witnessed, so take that for whatever you wish. Um, however, their cost is more, they're at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For a box delivered. To a job location.
When, you gave us the date when the other one.
They're, they would, they have no backlog, they would start on it and probably have it out ready, you know, right away, early next year, you know, in the May timeframe. May, May-June is what they were thinking. Their backlog is, sorry?
No, I, I apologize to you for interrupting, Forterra's date was?
Uh, August, I think, would be at the latest, is what they were thinking, because they, they do have backlog right now, but they would start making it in the spring.
Considerable difference.
Two hundred thousand dollar price difference, and then that's, you get. I would argue, from what I've been told from reputable sources, uh, uh, I think either product, product will perform, it just sounds like they're going to perform. But, um, ECP's product's been highly applauded lately, don't know why, and then, uh, obviously, they would have, uh. About a two, three month lead on Forterra for delivery.
Okay, if we, I'll give you some what-ifs, if we got this here in May, when could we possibly install it?
Well, see, I think that's, if we bid the project in March, and the contractor's made aware that the box has been procured. You know, we could put, we could potentially put, you know, uh, construction completion date of July thirty-first or something on.
Every, yeah, same question with the other one, if we don't receive it till August of twenty twenty-three, when could we?
I would still expect it to be built that, in the fall, yeah, uh, August or September, yeah.
Okay.
It's about a thirty-day construction activity to, to do this, these types of projects, so I would expect it to.
Getting the contractors to install it and do the work, is that a concern at that time of the year?
No, they prefer it, they prefer it in the fall, yeah.
Or if they prefer it in the fall, they might be too busy to come see us.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
That's my question.
We're running into that right now, so.
Well, that's how they run things.
We don't want to run into twenty twenty-four.
I agree, yeah, it's just that, it's.
So the question is, is that.
I feel confident, sorry, Marv, I'm sorry, Marv, I, I do, I feel confident we would get him, either one we went with, we would get him built next year. I think you run a bigger risk of not doing it with Forterra, just because of the timeline, but I still feel confident it would happen next year.
Okay, what I wanted to avoid is, the question that's going to come up to me is that, for two hundred grand, we're going to get this thing done. Won't have to wait an extra year. That's, that's the worst case scenario.
Uh, yeah, and I can, I can't speak for the companies, but they did say they have zero backlog right now, so, I mean, one would assume.
Yeah, we're not going to make a choice, I'm just putting it out there for the thought.
Well, that, that's a nice campaign speech, see? So, uh, by the way, uh, August came and August went, and gee, we just got our concrete into the, oh.
Yeah.
So.
Damn it.
So how much do we have to pay upfront in order to?
Secure?
Secure when it is.
Uh, I, I believe both of them were, both of them, they, you don't have to put a, place a down payment on, to my knowledge, for either box. They, you could get the, sign a purchase order, and then they would put it in the queue, and they would start working on it, you pay for it whenever the box is completed.
Okay.
So we essentially wouldn't even be paying for this box until next year?
Correct.
We would just be signing, like you said, a purchase order that would guarantee us the product at that price.
The only one I'm, I would probably, I'm trying to recall, is ECP, I know Forterra told me that, I'm trying to remember what ECP, because we talked about that on the phone. And their quote, well, I have, actually have a quote here for you from, this was for Morton County that they actually provided, it says, it's the exact same type of box. But they said, materials and storage will be billed monthly until, in full upon delivery, payments must be made monthly for products produced. So they, but then they say it must be paid in full at the end of completion, so I'm, it sounds like they make you pay monthly, that's what it is. And, uh, Forterra makes you pay for it at the end when it's done. Cause they, Dale even told me, even if you back out on it, he sounded like he's not worried about it for whatever reason, apparently.
Enough orders.
They're going to be able to use it, I guess, I don't know.
Standard enough size and.
Is there anything, is there anything you still need, just have this for the bid letting in March?
Uh, just ultimately, it is, no, no, well, I would say yes, ultimately a decision is, if the county decides they want to procure the box early, we'll need to know that, because, well, that'll affect our bid package. But, you know, we don't, we, we have some time to figure that out, we have a month yet here before we need to submit that, uh, to the.
Cause your, your bid package, package would essentially say, uh, culvert purchased by county.
Yeah.
And then you'd have it installed.
So we would no longer be eligible for the eighty-twenty in.
For that.
For that culvert.
Correct.
Correct.
That's why the, I think the thought process was to utilize, um, prairie dog funds, if, should they come in December, or something, you know, that would help, would cover the cost of the, the procurement of the box. Cause that's, yeah, local funds or other eligible grant, uh, buckets of money such as prairie dog can be used for that on a federal aid job, they just won't reimburse you that eighty percent.
Does it count for?
If you procure it early.
Does it count for our, uh, match portion?
Uh.
I was thinking it probably didn't.
No, because, well, potentially.
Potentially.
That's a great question, and I say that because if you use, if you use, um, prairie dog money, for example, that. My, to my knowledge, you're not allowed to use federal funds for a match on a federal aid project, so you would be forced to use local funds. Taxpayer dollars, however you want, whatever you want to call it, to, to, for the local match. If you did not use that. To buy the box, I would argue that that would be considered part of the match, and I would probably, I can talk to Brian Fuchs about that and find that out for you.
I guess my recommendation, we just heard the numbers today, I mean, these quotes are X number of days. Um, I, I would be nice to get a clarification on if we use. Prairie dog money, for example, or whatever, um, local funding source, if that would still qualify for our twenty. if that would still qualify for our 20% match. What I'm getting at is if we have a million dollar project and we use this portion as our match, even though we're not getting reimbursed on the federal side, if it still counts towards a match, we've kind of, you know, not a whole lot of a loss there.
Right.
But, and just because of the significant number difference and just hearing it for the first time, I think we should kind of mull it over and bring it up at the next meeting.
And can you get a firm answer as far as if the Rapid City one would want monies upfront?
Sure.
It does.
Yeah.
Can you repeat those two quotes again?
ECP, Engineered Concrete Products, was 450, approximately 450,000. Forterra was 256,000, 256,000.
Don't make me erase it and write it down again.
Yeah, and then engineering estimate was 330. So, I mean.
The engineer's estimate was 330 for the box, and then the in-sections, I think, added like another 100,000, so it was actually, I think, total was like 430 for the box. Correctly, but the box, the in-sections, I, I, yeah, those are, those, everything's included in the numbers I gave you from those companies.
Charles, the, the, the box, do they have icebreakers on them or, or no, no reason for it, or is it two cell?
It's a double cell, yeah.
Yeah, is there?
Um, I guess I would have to look into that for you.
Because that was, that does bring the cross, cost up a little bit. And, and depends on the particular river.
Well, yeah, see, and we have, we show in our design, we have two single cells, and the reason we do that is to give the contractor options. We're, because we had that question came up from Forterra, they said, "Well, this will save you a lot of money if you can do a double cell," and I said, "Well, obviously, obvi, yeah, we can do a double cell." It's just the options there in case they can only get their hands on.
Oh, yeah, sure.
You know, but that was one of the things that I wanted to bring up, because he, he did mention that the double cell, it was gonna save a lot of money if they could just produce it all in one, cast it all in one piece.
All in one piece, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
But I can check on the icebreaker, yeah, I'll look into that. Payment versus delivery.
So is the commission in agreement to have it on the next?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just add a desculvert quotes again.
Yep. Anything else, Charlie?
No, uh, no, the next meeting I'll have final payment for Bechtel paving for Mercer 26. I have that prepared, it's signed, I was late getting it into the, for the agenda, but it is, like I said, it's about 87,000 under. We did really well, that project turned out really good. Striping's done. Then the patching and striping additional coming out of our patching and striping budget, I have separate payment invoices ready for that as well. Some of which I believe Coteau was paying for, I'll have that all broken out for you guys at the next meeting, so.
Samantha, I also want to include 2022 and 2023 road project costs for the next one. We said we were gonna update that, please.
Got it.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Sorry I took so long.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, no problem.
It was all that public hearing, Wayne, huh? All right, next up, Treasurers Report.
Good morning. Do you guys have any questions? I kind of just pop in here in case you.
Did you send us the lead, the end of October, one?
This is end of October.
Yeah, there's two of them here, one's corrected.
That's, that's September and when is October?
Oh, did?
There you go.
Actually thought we were, thought we did pretty good last month, our expenses were pretty close to our revenue, I mean.
Very close.
I mean, it's 52,000 or something like that, but I guess I consider in the grand scheme of things, that's pretty, pretty good for this time of year, I guess, my opinion, but.
Calm before the storm.
Yeah. Get through one more month without having to pull out of the ICS account will be good.
Be very nice.
And when do we send out the?
I'm gonna try to have tax statements out by December 12th, that's my goal.
December 12th, okay.
December 12th, okay.
Because we'll get calls.
Oh, yes. You probably would have gotten a lot more, but now that the mill, you went down so much, you guys are gonna look awesome.
Oh, thank you, oh, thank you.
I had one person question our reverse psychology, if we went so high and then came down, but we were still over last year, but, he didn't call me back after we went below last year, so.
Still count that a win.
Don, I want to cover with the board a letter that we received from Nicole, and I will not pronounce her last name, from the State Treasurers.
Gaborche?
It's, it's because the last part of it, but I could never get the first part of it, pretty sure.
Anyway, I'll, I'll just share this with you guys. I sent a letter to Dawn and she took care of it for us and did a really nice job. We used to receive mineralities, called BLM monies, and we quit receiving it for a couple of years because we had been receiving too much. So we had to play some catch up on giving some, not getting it. So we sent the letter to the state, said, "Well, when are we gonna get those monies again?" And they sent us a letter saying that we're probably, and this wasn't in the budget, it's gonna really disappoint you, but we're gonna start receiving that money again in 2023. And it's over, it looks like it's over a couple hundred thousand. So, I'll, I'll give this letter to Samantha. I'll just read the paragraph, read it for you very quickly here. Based on the most recent certifications, if the next quarter is aligned with the recent, you should be seeing payments starting again in the third and fourth quarter, starting, they're paid in March and June of 2023. If something's changed, I'll let you know. And I do have a table here in case you're interested, but it shows, they're paid quarterly. And, and 20, I'm gonna read the number here. And the last time we received all four payments was in 2019, it's 352,000. So, if we're gonna receive two or three payments in 2023, that's where I got the guess that it's gonna be around 200,000. Additional revenue for our county that we're gonna receive from the treasurer, right?
Can I interrupt there? Those numbers that you get are probably the total, which includes also the city and school disbursements too, so not all of it'll go to the county. Because I think what I report on there is the total that we get, not just what goes to the county, what I sent to you, so, I, I mean.
Disregard the 200,000, we're gonna get some more money.
Right, right, well, countywide.
And I can, if you really, if you're really interested, Marvin, before the next meeting, I can come up, I can go back and look at 2019 was the last time we got it, is that what she said?
Yep.
I can go back and figure out what the county portion of that was.
Why don't we do that for Samantha's information, that it's a possible revenue stream for our 2023 that we didn't anticipate?
And what was the royalty on?
Mineral royalties.
Just, just, we're, we're on land management.
Okay.
Just, and, and if we're a little, if we're a little short, Marvel make up the 200,000.
But, you know. Just being familiar with their history, what was going on, and then playing catch up and finding out, thank you for helping us with that.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions for Don?
Yeah, I had forgotten that we lost those funds, actually.
That was an abrupt, it was like, all of a sudden they just stopped and it was like, okay, what happened?
And we had an over, we had an overpayment, right?
Yeah, somewhere along the line, we were getting more than we were supposed to, or something along those lines, so.
We got that letter here too, if you guys want it, it says what Dawn just said now.
Yes, I will figure out what the county got of that 2019 portion, report back.
Thanks.
Sure. Have a great rest of your day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Samantha, for your information, I'm gonna give you the copy of what Dawn did, and we did our history.
Yeah.
Right away them squirrels are running in there, can you see them going?
Disappointing, isn't it?
This quote, BLM.
All right, for Facilities Solutions.
Oh, the man. I'm here, I'm back.
Yeah.
Thanks for putting me on the agenda, I thought it was time, and I give you guys kind of an update of where we're at today.
Is it, is it your fault that we've had this nice weather into November?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, right? I'd love to take credit for that.
I'm glad to blame you for that.
But I'm afraid of what's coming in the spring.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, so, right now, we're sitting right around 25% complete. We have the, all of the lighting is completed. I believe they are just working on some dimmer switches that just came in. That was our biggest back order on that, and I think there's nine, I think they're finishing it right now. So, I would say as of this week, the, all the lighting will be complete. All of the air handler refurbishment, refurbishment is complete.
Explain refurbishment.
So that was down in the boiler room, the air handlers for that section, we were just getting them back, kind of.
Up to par.
Yeah, dealing with the deferred maintenance, basically, not replacing the units, but belts, motors if they needed it. We put in new filter racks, we got rid of the roll filters, so now you have standard pleated filters, which is nice, Jim's loving it already. They cleaned some reheat coils for the jail cells, so we got better airflow now. Just a, just a good cleaning, refurbishment, bearings, all that good stuff. So they should last you a few years more.
Some new motor, some new motors.
Yep, new motors, new belts, new bearings, so, almost new, but can't call them new, so. But, you know, that should last you a few years, you know, another, get you another five, 10 years out of them, for now, until something major happens. Now, if we lost a wheel or something like that, or a coil, then I'd say it's usually time to replace the whole unit, but they'll get you down the road for a while yet, so. The rooftops, I've got an update on that, as of yesterday, the rooftops are manufactured, but they're still sitting on the factory lot. So, we do not know when they're gonna get shipped, shipping is a big headache right now. I'm hoping they're out in the next two weeks and on their way here. I just can't get a firm ship date, so, I've talked to the contractor that's going to be replacing them, we're working something out. I'd like to try to get at least the one above us here in before winter really sets in. Now, they originally planned to do them both at the same time, get the crane here once, but we're trying to find ways to work around that and, and see. I have some contingency money, as you all know, I've used some of that already for some lighting and some sculpt change that I did. And Jim and I talked about, just to make things better, some things that were missed, but, yeah, so we'll try to use our contingency monies, make it right, get that in. Temperature controls is planned, oh, go ahead.
You were talking about rooftop units, so.
Yep.
Hopefully get the one installed this year, and the second one installed when?
Probably in the spring, because that one is tied to the VAV system that goes around all the offices. We can't really put that in until we have all the controls for the VAVs. We have the VAVs sitting at the contractor shop, but the control components, all those control boards, they're hoping to have those in January, February. So, we ordered them right away, and that's how backordered everything is, as you, you guys know, and you deal with that all the time, I'm, I'm hearing, so. But the temperature control, they're hoping to start as soon as next week. Pulling wire, running conduit, getting that all up to speed, so they're gonna be here all through the winter. I've got a schedule, I sent that off to Jim, we're looking at, as, this week they're prepping everything in their shop. Next week they're gonna start to come out on site, and then work all through March, April, so they'll be here a lot. We're gonna set a job trailer somewhere that's not gonna affect snow removal, Jim's gonna find a place, so. And then they'll have all their components locked up and onsite and not taking any, taking any of your storage space, that's always limited in facilities, so they'll keep it onsite, but out of your way, so.
Well, I'd hope it'd be protected next to the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I do too, yeah, I'm sure you have cameras, you know, so, but yeah, they just want to keep it somewhere that is not gonna affect snow removal.
We'll probably put it in the basement there, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, garage.
Put it in the Sallyport, right?
How are, how are we doing budget wise?
Everything's right on. You guys don't have any other charges? I mean, you're, we're billing progress payments. Your costs aren't gonna change, they're locked in stone, so unless you change the scope, you know, you want to add something to it, nothing's gonna change, so.
Have we qualified for any grants or anything?
Uh, I'm still working on that, I'm waiting to hear, I, last I checked with the state, when all of the school ester money came out and the ARPA funds, a lot of people use that for energy grants, and so the funds were depleted. I'm hoping with legislative session, that'll get built back up, and then we can apply at that time. But I want to wait, we have plenty of time yet, but yeah, at the end, when I know that fund's got money in it, I'll get you that application and we'll, we'll apply. I write it all, all you have to do is sign it and send it in, so.
And they either give us money or they don't?
Exactly, and it's a 50, 50/50 match, so, yeah, anything with the energy payback of 10 years or less. So, lighting, that's gonna be the big one that I can think of, so, maybe some controls.
Lighting's what I've seen the most get funded.
Yep, yep. Um, other than that, so yeah, temperature control's starting next week, lighting, and the refurbishment of the air handlers is complete. Air handlers, as soon as they get here, we're gonna work that out, and I would say, worst case scenario, we, we do them both in the spring. If there's any problems with this, I'll, I'll make sure I take care of it and, and keep it going for you, so if I have to get service tech up here, I'll do that. It's running great now, but I know we had issues last winter, so if we do, like, I just told Jim, call me, I'll send someone out, make sure it's taken care of. I want to, I want to make sure you're happy.
And if we do any boiler replacement in the next X number of years, everything is integratable?
Yeah.
To what we've done, so.
Yep, no issues there, so, yeah, that's something that we should budget for is the boilers. I know that's kind of getting to be on the last legs, so.
When you hear more about the possible delivery of those units, will you let Wayne know, Wayne know so that he can let us know at the board?
I'll, I'll update Jim, Jim couldn't be here today, but yeah, he told me to still show, but yeah, I'll update Jim and Jim can pass that on to you guys.
Thank you.
It's kind of been my chain of command, is run things through Jim and then he passes the info on, so, it's great, and, yeah, he's been great to work with, so.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else for us?
No, unless you want to talk about future budgeting for anything else? I mean, boilers, some of that stuff, that would be the only thing I would have, but.
We'll go back through your chain of command.
Well, I just want to make sure you're aware, that they, you know, they, that would be the next thing that I would consider. You know, we can't guarantee how long things are gonna last. There was one area that Jim and I have been looking into as well, was the Sallyport area, in getting the hot water heat out there. Instead of using the hot water, we've been just kind of mulling around, what would it cost to get like a gas propane heater in there? Just so we don't have to worry about that freezing up, the hot water freezing up, out there in the garage, but, yeah, we'll just keep you updated with that.
Is that on a circulation pump or anything, or is that?
Yeah, it's off the main circulation pumps, there's a unit heater up in the corner with a hot water coil through there, and then you do not have glycol in that side of the system. I don't recommend adding it, once you've ran so many years without it, it just will make leaks pop up everywhere, and it's a nightmare. Your plumbing bills will go through the roof, it's not worth it, but if we can switch that over to gas instead of hot water, then we can cap that back and not have, not have to worry about freeze up or glycol, so.
Well, and I, I know Jim during our budget season was bringing up the boilers and stuff, that's kind of why I mentioned that, we're just, we're, we're looking at it.
I just want to make sure you're aware, because that's, I, I don't want. I just wanna make sure you're aware, 'cause that's, I, I don't wanna, you know, miss something, and, yeah. Make sure I give you all the info.
Something as important as a boiler system, I'd like to know.
Exactly, yep.
So that we can plan for it, that's not, that's something, something we want to break down in January, and then, hey, next November, maybe we'll have it.
But everything's going great, you know, it's just getting equipment, and I told you from the start, that would be the biggest challenge and hurdle, and, and it is. But everyone's working as hard as they can to get things going, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in and letting us know.
Yeah, no problem. If you ever want me to come back, just let me know.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
I saw that on my list.
All right, time for other business. Wanna just go down the order that we have it listed here? Let's start with Wayne. I usually start with Gene, so I don't have to switch things up. Or do you, do we need to go to Gene, so you can think about?
Yeah, go down to Gene.
Gene?
Very short again, I don't have much. Clerk of court, there'll be some updates coming in the near future. Other than that, I don't have anything else right now.
Okay, Marv?
Just that I've been working real hard with the solar ordinance. I, I told you guys, I was hoping to get it done in three meetings, and I did mention it would be very aggressive. I think I will have the preliminary draft ready for our planning and zoning meeting this month. We did have our three meetings, they were each two hours long, it's exhausting, and then you go home and take all the notes and compile them and put them in the right spots, takes a lot more time yet, so. But it went well, and Mike Esslinger's on that committee with me, and he told me that, don't call him in November, 'cause that's a busy time in the fall for ranchers and farmers, so. Anyhow, good progress, and hope to have a preliminary draft by Thursday, this planning and zoning meeting. That's it.
Okay. Library Board hasn't met for a while from, for my portfolio, but the annual meeting for the Fair Board was last week. I had a scheduling conflict, I wasn't able to make it there, but I did talk to Rick. The same president, vice president, treasurer, as the previous year, are in office, they have a full board, so that's good. They have their annual fair conference in November, so should have an update on that in December. That's usually when they procure the carnival portion of it, and once they have that, then they have set dates, so. Should have fair dates sometime in December. And I think that's all the portfolio updates I have at this time, so, Liza?
At the ambulance meeting, unfortunately, we still do not have the new ambulance that we ordered over a year ago. And unfortunately, we don't know when the new one will come. Of course, Big Bertha's still causing issues, so we're really hoping that new one gets here soon. One good thing is that all the radios came in for siren, they haven't actually been placed in the ambulances yet or anything like that, but we actually got them all there, so. We actually did a real good job about getting those all in. And, let's see, Sam is super busy with election stuff right now. I remember.
We, we mailed out roughly twenty-six hundred mail-in ballots, and we've gotten, as of yesterday, seventeen, just over seventeen hundred.
Wow.
And then we, we have the early vote, starts tomorrow, correct? And that's here?
Yep, twelve to seven.
And that goes from twelve to seven, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
Correct.
Right? And then where can people actually vote on Tuesday?
Beulah Civic Center.
Beulah Civic.
From nine AM to seven PM.
From nine AM to seven PM, Beulah Civic Center on November eighth.
Correct.
That's all I have for my portfolio, please.
Okay, Wayne?
I do remember a little bit. Thank goodness, thanks for giving me a break. As you, as you seen, we had a real nice presentation on the facility here this morning. Something I kinda forgot to mention on the last meeting is Dakota West Central here. We do have a new director working with Steve for a month, and I'm sorry to say, I don't know, can't think of his name right offhand, but he had worked, worked for Steve for, for a while here, and then he moved on and, and became a state employee, but. So we do have a new director, and that's, that, that'll be tremendous, and so we don't have to go through stepping stones and hardship from, and the folks all know him and liked him real well, and, and so that, that's, that, that's a good sign. I guess that's all I had then for you, okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda, ARPA COVID funds?
Okay, I asked that to be put on there, and I was very prompt in getting that to Samantha, I sent it to her at seven o'clock this morning. That was a joke. I'm not trying to be smart. Anyhow, first thing I wanna hand out, and the reason we put this on there is I asked the board per recommendations that we received elsewhere, that we put these monies in separate funds and track them that way. Okay, so I'm gonna hand out each one of you guys first to do with ARPA. It shows you where the monies that we received, and where we've planned to spend it, to the best of my knowledge. And I'll do the first one. First one's the federal ARPA way up on top. We committed to the landfill two-hundred-and-fifty-one, three-seventy-four expenses to date, and that, that number that's in yellow, that's an estimate. And I got that from a previous meeting where Samantha said we had about ninety-four thousand left over. And that's, there's nothing concrete about those numbers at all, so that's just what I put in there. So, where it says balance, you can pencil in ninety-four thousand and put down the word estimate. So the question I have, let's just talk about the landfill monies first. We talked about that at a previous meeting, that whatever they needed for the improvement, the balance has to be back into the ARPA fund, it belongs in the ARPA fund. How are we doing that? I'm just gonna ask Samantha, is that?
Yeah, the funds are still in the ARPA fund.
Okay. Have we paid anything on that improvement?
The building improvement?
No, the, the landfill funds, the landfills.
The landfill bills are already paid.
So that's, that money is not in the ARPA, all the money that was left over is in the land, is in the ARPA fund.
There is an ARPA fund already set up.
I agree.
All those funds have gone into the ARPA account. If there is any bills that were received from these projects, came out of the ARPA funds. We never transferred funds.
That's what I wanted to know, okay. All right, so then we're, we're pretty good there. So on our ARPA funds, we should, and we have an ARPA fund set up, that one's taken care of. We should have four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars, plus approximately ninety-four thousand that was left over from the landfill. So when we look up in the trial balance, it'll actually show us what's in there, and it should be close to those two numbers. The state ARPA, we put that into the township road funds. I'm asking the board again today, do you guys want that left in the township board, or do you wanna set that up as a separate fund, as it has been recommended? For discussion, I'm gonna make a motion that we take the state ARPA funds from House Bill fifteen-oh-five, set them up into our own specific fund to track expenses.
Okay, there's a motion by Marv to create a fund for the state House Bill fifteen-oh-five funds that the county received, is there a second to that? For discussion, I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna emphasize that I'm not the only one who's recommending this. It's been recommended through Nodaco several times, and they brought it up again at the latest convention that we had in Bismarck, October second through fifth. And it was also mentioned that there was a seminar on fraud, that these funds, the best way to prevent any fraud, not saying there is, but the best way is to keep very close track, and we are gonna be audited. And if we don't allocate these monies and be able to be very transparent, we could have to pay it back. That's my argument.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's arguing with what you're recommending, Marv. I believe that it's just been held off, and I think that you wanted it done at a time where we were focusing more on approving the budget. You know, I, we all have the same, well, I guess I can't speak for everybody, but we all know and understand that these funds are subject to audit, so if we can be as transparent as possible as a county to show where they're being spent, we'll, I think we can all agree that that's what we should do.
And currently, we, we haven't spent any of these state, right?
Correct.
And if we pull it out of the township road funds, would that affect anything?
I don't think so, and then if we used it for roads, we just have to make a transfer or a payment at that time, and earmark it that it was for whatever road.
Yep.
A little bit, the question I have is it, do we need to, see, have to get a programmer in order to program this into another fund? To, to secure it and to follow it? It is all right where it's at today, isn't it?
You've got two, two parts to your question there, Wayne. One is creating another fund, we did that for the ARPA funds, the federal funds, so that it can be done. The other part, is it okay where it's at? Yes and no. Because right now, we can take the township roads, and we're moving that into the county roads, which I've explained, and then we divide that up into five different projects. How much of that was actually federal, or House Bill fifteen-oh-five, for each one of those five, it's hard to track.
The township roads was originally set up because we receive funds from the state, and so that's what that account is for anyway. So, this House Bill fifteen-oh-five is obviously funds that we are receiving from the state. So they're sitting there. When we use it for a project, then we transfer that money into the county road fund. Now, is there another way that we could possibly do that, kinda like what we're doing with ARPA, and just taking it directly out from there to show the expenditures? I mean, we, that's a possibility, but we can also set up another account and just hold those House Bill fifteen-oh-five funds in the, in that account.
So it's more clear and transparent that way, then?
Correct.
Because like, like Marv said, yes, these, these funds will be definitely audited, and we gotta explain, yeah.
They've already spent, if we've spent anything. And depending on how much you have spent in the last year, then it was already subject to a single audit.
So there's two ways we can do this, we can either create another fund, or we could have an account.
Yeah, well, we can, we can leave it where it's at, because that's where the money, how we show where we're getting the money from the state. But there's also the funds that we get for, I can't think of off the top of my head, there's two different revenue sources that are coming into there, yeah. So if we wanted to create another fund or account, then we could just put the House Bill fifteen-oh-five funds into that account.
That township fund, is that like where state revenue aid for?
Yes. Yeah, that's what we get from Nodaco, they give us our estimate of what we're gonna receive for that year.
Basically, your, your gas and diesel tax?
There you go.
Is, is what typically goes in there?
Goes in there, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to create a separate fund for the ARPA money received from House Bill fifteen-oh-five? Any other discussion? Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I believe I'll vote aye.
Gene?
Nay.
Okay, that motion passes. Anything else on the ARPA COVID funds, Marv?
No, on the ARPA funds, and I appreciate you guys' thoughtfulness and consideration on that. The second one is COVID monies, and that, when you read the COVID money rules that they've sent out, and they've sent out a couple of them, it's supposed to go into the general fund, which is exactly what we did. When we were at the seminar, it was suggested that, don't do that, keep track of it, so I'm just bringing it up again. That, that's a consideration. I guess all I have to say on that is, it was emphasized that we probably, possibly could consider that. I'm not gonna make a motion to that effect at this time. We received a total of about one-million-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars from ARPA funds to date, I mean, from COVID funds. Same thing, altogether. So it's one-million-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. And about, from my calculations, and I need to verify this with Samantha, and I haven't done that, and she needs time to look it up, and she'll take my sheet and advise me again. From my calculation, there's about seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars still in our general fund from COVID. That's all I have on that.
Okay. Next on the agenda, weed board appointment, looks like we have one applicant, we just have one position?
One vacant position, and we had one applicant, correct.
Okay.
And if you would, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept Michael Berg for a four-year term, I think it's four years.
Sounds right.
Mercer County Weed Board member, from District Seven over here, I think it is.
Okay, motion by Wayne to appoint Michael Berg to the Weed Board, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Marv, any discussion? And you said the Weed Board is broken into districts, and he fits the district's vacancy?
Yes, he does.
I believe it is, yeah, District Seven.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv, or, excuse me, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
We have the budget on here, I think it was just a clarification that Sam wanted to bring forward.
Yeah, it's just, I wanted to be transparent with you guys on an oversight that I've found while I've been certifying the levies to all the different entities. The West River Transit had gotten ahold of me before budget discussion, and they're asking for a grant match. Well, that was placed under the ambulance fund. So, that's not an ambulance, it's a bus. I need to move that into the general fund, which is going to lower the levy for the ambulance and raise the levy for the general fund, but it's actually just a wash for our overall levy, which shows on the two different levy worksheets there.
Which one was that again?
Ambulance, oh, the West River Transit Grant Match. And then I'll ask for Travis to sign those, updates to those accounts.
What was that, West River Grant?
West River Transit.
Transit.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
It was put under the ambulance, but the ambulance gets its own
Yeah.
mail levy, so we moved it to the general fund, so that we didn't have to ask it back from the ambulance, so.
Basically, point three-one mils, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
Three-one times fifty-two, point three-one times that.
Yep.
Okay.
So I don't think we need a motion or anything, that's just a clarification, and then I'll have to re-sign the.
Yeah, I can't certify the ambulance, that those extra funds are, we won't get them back from the ambulance.
Right.
Gonna have to drive for a little while.
We got the big ambulance paid for, but Bertha is not being nice.
All right, last item on the agenda, auction house social service building?
Yeah, this was, there is no update, and I spoke with Todd about it yesterday, and he has not received any clarification or any communication regarding the auction house. There was also a question if we could add the auction house in the social services building to the upcoming delinquent tax auction, and he has advised us that that's probably not the best practice. So we should, if we wanna do that, we can hold that at another time.
Okay, and it was, that was just a question I brought up, because I was like, if we're having a sale, let's throw it on there, but if we're advised not to do it, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me. And since we talked about the auction, that, has that time been set?
Ten o'clock.
Ten AM on the fifteenth, that's great.
On the fifteenth, yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, uh, being no further items on the agenda for this, I'll, um, declare this meeting of the Mercer County Commission adjourned.
Is Todd in?
No, no, what do we do for the rest of the day?
I don't know, but.
Some of us are weird.
Oh, man, what a statement! I thought I'd take a nap or something.
Well, go ahead.
I mean, if you're really warm, so you can come around at me.
Take one for me.